It is 6:30. I'd like to call the August 21st meeting of the Apple Royalston Regional School Committee's order. The first line of business is the Fledge of Allegiance. Mitch?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes for July 17th is your motion. Phil, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or corrections, et cetera? Seeing none, all is in favor? Alright, public input. A reminder that the school committee policy is three minutes per person. Item for public input must be on the agenda, 20 minutes total. This evening, under public comment, we do have two individuals, Crystal DeRozia and Megan Cody. Are you guys going to come up together, or do you want to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want us to talk about it now, or can obviously get into the topic? We could split what it was on.
Okay, it's up to you if the committee, if they want to talk. Functionality Contracted Services, which is on the agenda. It's up to the committee if they would allow the input at that point, or if we could hear it now and then move on. It's up to you. Oh, sorry.
I make motion that we move it to item 6.
Yep. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Yeah, just do it here. Yep, thank you. Okay. Recognition, School Committee. Who's back with you?
Nothing.
Mitch?
Nothing. Thanks for being here.
Eric? Bill?
Nothing.
Carla?
Nothing.
Kenneth?
No.
Okay. Ida?
Yeah.
John? Nancy?
I don't know if this is where to do it, but I'm good anyways.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. So, we had a member of the school committee for quite a long time, Carrie McNamara. And I would just like everyone to have her in their thoughts and prayers. She's been diagnosed with an inoperable brain tumor. And she was a really good member of the school committee in the building committee. She did lots of that, so I would like everyone to just leave her in their thoughts.
Thank you. Superintendent, you want to do the introduction first?
Yes.
Okay, great, great.
I just want to take a minute to introduce you to some of our new staff members from the administrative perspective. First of all, at the middle school, Frank Hill will be our new interim assistant principal at the middle school. So, if you want to come up for a second, thank you. Frank joined us, he was originally a special ed teacher here at the middle school. He comes with some administrative experience from a former district. And so, we're very excited to have him here. And he started working on August 1st, correct?
Correct.
Correct, so I just want to say welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
You look a corporate to the year, and a great year.
Thank you. Next, at the high school, unfortunately, Mary Jane Rickson got the opportunity to become interim superintendent in Maynard, they actually called and asked her to take the job. It was great for her, but left us with an open positions at the high school. After interviewing four assistant principals' positions, we did not find a qualified candidate. So, we decided to go with a different model this year, we're going to see how it works. And I believe we did send a notice out to the school committee, making them aware of that. So, I'm excited to let you know that we hired two veteran teachers from the school. Amanda Pegeween and Dave St. Gene, if they'll come up. And we've been getting ready this year as D of Students for the school. My understanding at this particular juncture, as we have put to them for a year, I will have discussions with the school committee as to what they want to do with next steps from that point. But we're very excited that they were willing to step forward. I appreciate that because they were called less than a week ago, saying, "Would you be willing?" And they're taking on the task for this year, so I just want to thank them, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
And honestly, with Mary Jane leaving, Dave King has just been appointed interim principal of the high school. Dave comes to us as an assistant principal for multiple years. And he's been in the district now for how many years, Dave?
21st.
21st. So, he has been assigned as the interim principal. We're excited that he was willing to take it on as well, and I just want to thank Dave for that. Next, at Woriston Community School, again, another one of our administrators promoted, two curriculum director of Grammy, that being Beth Braven. And so, with that being said, we went for a search, and we're very lucky to introduce you to Cynthia Riley. Cynthia comes from the local area, which is wonderful. She's been over there working very hard. At Woriston, it's already had, I think, a parent's opportunity to talk with the first school. It has multiple others advertised and ready to go. She comes to us with multiple years of experience from Orange Public Schools. And we just want to welcome her. I believe that is everyone. Did I miss anyone? No, that was everyone.
And there is a retirement recommendation?
Correct. So, who in the school has come up?
Ms. Allen, did you join? Thank you. So, Phil's going to help me with this presentation. I assure Riley no tears, and it would be short, so here goes. There's a sound that I've heard over and over in the last few weeks. And it was something like, "Oh." Various people over the last few weeks are hearing the retirement sound. That's the sound I heard.
That's the sound they made.
And this morning, I come in, I called a staff member, and she said, "Why are you leaving our tears?" I said, "I don't know what happened." And she said, "I just learned that I leave retirement." So, that's the impact you have on people. We miss you dearly, 25 years in the district.
I've brought many students to tears.
What's been so amazing to me, what we look for in teachers, is that their focus is on kids. There's so much that goes on, and I leave for 25 years, that's where your focus is, and thank you for that. One of your colleagues, Scott Hunter, was in the other day, and said, I think, said it best, "You are the ultimate profession and friend." So, I wish you all the best.
And the second one?
I hope it's not our lifestyle.
And Lynn also has?
Yes, retirement recognition. I want to say congratulations to Brenda Butland, who's been 13 years in the central office. She prepares these wonderful table boards for facilities, and for ARP, and for the general fund. She's been here for 13 years, she was behind the scenes, she did not want big to do. She's very shy, but she's retiring, she's moving to South Carolina, we're very excited for her. Her last day will be Friday, so I just want to say congratulations to Brenda Butland.
Daisy, is somebody going to help you with this thing?
Yes, I'll introduce. So, this evening, we will be presenting the results of our state review. If you remember, the state was here back in January. And went through our district, and gave us a report back. Tonight, I have Laura Rochenee with me, who will be presenting with me tonight from the state. So, I'm going to have Laura come up, and I'm going to give her the clicker. Will you have the PowerPoint on the screen? I don't think there's a need for people to move it, because everybody has a copy of it at the table. They were copies available at the table in the front, so if you can get a chance to get one, please feel free. And I'm going to turn it over to Laura, and we'll be doing this in tandem. She'll be talking about the report, and I'll be talking about the next steps for this year.
This is a good spot for me to?
Wherever you want to be.
Yes, okay.
Can you stay around my head?
Well, thank you, everyone. I really appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you. I appreciate the invitation, Superintendent Fernandez, to come and discuss the district review report. As I'm sure you're aware, my office conducted district review in Apple Royalston earlier during this school year. And that report is now final and published. And so, tonight, I'll be talking a little bit about the report format, what the review purpose and goals. And then, we'll really dig into the findings, and as Superintendent Fernandez said, we'll be sort of doing it together, so that you can share both from the state as well as from the community. So, the agenda, getting this together, is basically, again, to do an overview of the whole process, why we do these district reviews, what they look like from a high level. Again, talk about the report format, and then get into the findings, and of course, make time for questions. So, first of all, many of you might be familiar with this already, but just to make sure that we're sort of clear in starting from the beginning here, my office conducts district reviews in between 15 to 20 districts per year. And our goal of the entire process is really to provide school districts with an objective look at systems that are supporting and possibly improving teaching and learning. So, we use evidence, as well as our understanding of best practice, to identify strengths and challenges, and to provide recommendations for improvement, including finding or identifying resources from the department where this is relevant. So, we know that school districts are on a continuous improvement journey, and we know that they have a lot of information already to use for that, a lot of data, a lot of analysis from folks within the district. But our goal is basically add value to that investment process by providing sort of an outside view of the district. So, key elements of the process, we base our whole process and our report on department's district standards and indicators. I'll talk a little bit more about those in a bit, but just so you know, that's sort of how we frame all of our work. Our process is very evidence-based, and what that means is that we do our best to triangulate findings. So, we only produce findings that we can support with multiple types of evidence. And that means that every district's report looks a little bit different, because we will look at what the evidence shows us, both in terms of strengths and challenges, and really focus on areas, and those are different for each district. We're very much focused on system quality, so this is not really a compliance audit. Those processes are also important, so they'll come out of the same department that my office does. But we're really looking again at sort of how effectively is instruction happening, and how well are students learning, and what are student outcomes looking like. So, we're looking at the quality of systems to support all of that work. So, just to talk a little bit about what happens before the visit. We have a team of independent consultants, and there were six consultants who we hire and train in our protocol. They conduct a, first of all, the districts admit a great deal of documents in advance. So, the team spent two full days reading all those documents, studying this data. And then, they come to do the onsite, they were here for four days in January. And during the onsite, they had group interviews with a number of different stakeholders. So, our protocol includes meetings with district leaders, program leaders, school leaders, teachers, students, students' families, school committee members. So, we really try to get everyone's perception of what the district looks like, what the work looks like on a day-to-day basis. The team conducts classroom observations, so they were in classrooms in all schools in the district. And they also review a random selection of educator evaluation files for teachers, and all administrative evaluations that are available to the team. After the onsite visit, the team, they come back together. So, they came back together immediately after that onsite in January, and they developed their draft findings and recommendations. We then have an extensive editing process in my office, checking facts, checking evidence, making sure that the report is coherent and clear. Our process is then to send the draft to a superintendent to check for factual accuracy, and then to publish the report shortly thereafter. So, can I answer any questions at this point about the overall goals for the district review, or the process that we follow? So, many of you have seen the report, but just in case, just want to give an overview. Again, there are six district standards, Leadership and Governance, Curriculum Instruction, Assessment, Student Support, Human Resources and Professional Development, and Financial Asset Management. So, we think of those as sort of the buckets, those are the main areas that we look at. And under each of those, there are associated indicators. Our standards and indicators were recently revised last year. And so, we are very confident that we're looking at indicators and standards that really reflect current practice in the field. And we also make an excellent effort to more explicitly address issues of equity in that document. So, the report, basically, the format is, there's an introduction, there's an indicative summary of profiles and performance data, and then the results are organized according to those standards that I just listed. So, strength findings, challenges, areas for growth, recommendations, and assessment of data. So, our discussion tonight will focus on the finding statements, what I call the headlines. But if you haven't had a chance yet, I would definitely encourage you to review other sections of the report. So, we're examining the student performance section, had important information that we might not have a chance to address this morning. So, before we jump into talking about the specific findings, just thought I would share a couple of sort of highlights and sort of takeaways from my perspective leading the office of district reviews. I always tell school committees, and superintendents, and folks in districts that I am not an expert in any of the areas in the report, so I'm not here as a curriculum expert or a student support expert, but I am someone that sees a lot of these reports, and has worked at sort of a high level with districts over several years. So, I can definitely say that this is a very positive report overall. The review team was very impressed with the strategy and the commitment of the leadership in the district. We're very aware of the ambitious nature of the work. It's very clear that the district has more, quite substantial work to do in order to continue to improve student outcomes, that's absolutely critical. But the team felt very strongly that really, at every level of the district, people seem very, very clear, very aware of what the challenges are, and very clear about what the strategy is to address them. So, just wanted to mention that to sort of frame these findings before we get into a little bit of our detail. Okay, so with that, why don't we start with the Leadership and Governance standard? So, this was, I will say, this is a little bit unusual. We typically have at least one challenge finding in the leadership standard, we did not in this report. So, just wanted to note that. So, a couple of, again, sort of headlines. First of all, that the leadership team, led by the superintendent, including school committee and other district leaders, I'm not going to read this too, because it's a little bit wordy, but the idea here is that leaders concentrate on a focused number of priority areas. And they use those areas to plan, to develop policy, and they reflect on student outcome data in light of those priorities. So, this is really important, because it can be very difficult for districts to have that level of focus. Often, there's so many different needs, there's so many different things that need to be done, that it can be really tempting to just sort of go in a million different directions. So, what the team found is that there are clear priorities laid out in the strategic plan and program planning processes that really keep everyone focused. And another strength, and this is an interesting, I found it interesting, relates to resource allocation, that there's very nimble resource allocation, and that leaders are thinking constantly about how best to use available resources. Something we often hear in districts, and it's understandable, is we don't have enough money, we don't have enough money. And that is a reality, so I'm not trying to dismiss that. But what's exciting is when we find a district that's saying, "Okay, we understand that there's limited resources. How can we best use those resources?" And so, there's a lot of flexibility here that the team found.
Can you help redefine nimble in your viewpoint?
Yes, yes. So, sorry, that was a little bit jargony. So, basically flexible. So, instead of saying, you know, "Well, we always put these funds for this particular purpose, so we're just going to keep doing it, because it was always been done," to say, "Okay, let's actually look at student outcome data, let's look at where the needs might be."
But you don't see an inadequacy, you see efficient use, is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
You see an efficient use of resources rather than a lack of resources, correct?
Correct, correct. So, this is not really a comment of sufficiency of resources. The district is exceeding net school spending, and beyond that, it's really a local decision. So, that's not something that my office will weigh in on. You know, we certainly have opinions about it, but we understand the differences in net school spending.
You had also said earlier that the teachers or the staff doesn't feel that they're badly under-allocated. Is that an essentially correct statement?
I'm not sure that I would say that, and again, I'm trying to go back to sort of what the evidence showed. So, I don't think you have enough evidence to say that necessarily. But what I would say is that, you know, again, going back to that term nimble, which maybe we could have picked a clearer term, but basically, the idea is to, you know, that folks in the district are looking at data, and are really paying attention to needs, and are figuring out where to allocate resources, where to sort of point your funds, yeah. Any other questions on this standard? So, our next standard is Curriculum Instruction. Again, some interesting findings in this, from a perspective, in this standard. So, strengths, an observed classroom, so again, we're not in every classroom, but the team was in every school. There was a generally high incidence of characteristics of high-quality instruction in elementary and middle grade classrooms. And by characteristics of high-quality instruction, the reference there is to the observation tool that the team uses. And the data from all of their observations is tallied in aggregate in the appendix in the report. And so, our tool is based on what we, based on research, and a lot of work have developed a tool based on what we feel are the characteristics of high-quality instruction. And so, the team found generally high incidence of that in both elementary and middle class rooms. And the district has implemented a number of important district-wide initiatives to improve curriculum instruction. So, again, going back to having some really clear priorities, and putting some plans in place to achieve those. The challenge under this standard had to do with generally lower incidence of characteristics of effective instruction at that school. So, a couple of things about that. First of all, does that mean there was no quality instruction at the high school? Definitely does not. It just means we look in our classroom observations for trends across classrooms. So, this is not an indictment of any individual teachers, but what we are saying is that when we use our tool and look at some of these elements that we feel comprise quality instruction, there was a much lower incidence of that at the high school level. This is a common finding in our reports, this is something the department's actually doing a lot of thinking about, how we can better, at the state level, support high schools for a number of reasons. We feel like this is the thing that we're finding a lot. At the same time, you know, I do think if you had a chance to look at some of the data in the high school in this finding, it is pretty concerning. So, I think it's something that the district is quite testing. So, if that includes a superintendent?
So, based on the report, we've already begun to do some work in this area. First thing we did was, we did go to the finance committee, or the budget committee, and asked if we could use some school choice funds to hire an academic coach over the high school. That was approved at that meeting, and so, we've begun to move forward with that, and have a candidate ready to go. We also provide teachers with clearly articulated goals for instruction. First day of school PD, I will be conducting a PD with all of our indicators for instruction that we have been using at the elementary and secondary level, and enforcing it back. It's extremely important that we're following these. Provide teacher with non-evaluative feedback from coaches and department heads. We have already begun discussing that, and putting that forward, so that we're getting more of a stream. We now have a form that the principal will fill out stating, "This person is in need of assistance." The person will have to say, "Yes, I want to take the assistance," or "No." If they choose "No," then it will be noted in their evaluation, but we are going through, we're going through that process. We will have monthly walkthroughs, we've already set them up with the state, to walk through the high school and get feedback. That is the similar process that we used over ACES this year, which really made a difference. Junior officials will be part of those meetings, again, so that they're hearing from us what the feedback is that we're getting from the state, and regards to instruction. Like I said, we've hired the two new teams to help better monitor school climate at the building. So, now, instead of having one person who's doing that, we now have two. We are, or use the special ed coordinator and pupil service director to help evaluate both of high school, so we have a couple more eyes, and getting more feedback back to teachers. Provide PD from RBT on creating a rigorous classroom. We have already contracted with them, they will be coming in and providing that PD. And we will also be training the teachers through the academic coach and RBT on the flash cycle, which is our data cycle that we use that starts with understanding particular state standards and the rigor of those, and goes into the actual lesson planning and activity, to the assessment that you use to see if the kids gain the knowledge, and then the teach cycle. So, all of the teachers will be trained in that. Our teacher leaders have already been training this summer. Anyone that was newly hired who did not take that training, will be signing up to get into the program immediately. I don't know, if anybody has any questions on this section before we move on?
The next section is the assessment standard. Again, a couple of notable strengths in this section. First of all, the first finding has to do with establishing what we call a data-literate culture, which again, might be one of those terms that's perhaps not completely clear, but the idea is that the effective use of data does not rest with one person, or one principal, or one staff member. That it's really something that the team found was embedded throughout the district, that this is something that folks are using different types of assessment data, and are really valuing the use of data. And that there are data analysis processes and structures that district leaders have put in place in order to be used. So, I know, as a former teacher, I can say sometimes you can be in a situation where you just get a whole bunch of data, and you're like, "I don't know what to do with this." But this finding really had to do with, there are structures, there are processes, there are protocols to really walk people through the process, and to make sure everyone has consistency in how they're using data. The challenge in this standard has to do with the need to continue to build educators' capacity to use some of these protocols to follow some of these processes. And that the team found the district has not also yet found a way to effectively share assessment results with student's families, district-wide.
So, with that being said, again, looking at it, we had already put into place prior to even getting this document from the state, professional development on high-impact teams with Ms. Love, which is very much about data decision-making. And so, she came in this summer and began training our whole district team in June, in that particular cycle. Our goal is to use that cycle during planning time. We also restructured planning time in the district. Last year, we had 45 minutes once a week in order to do this, and that was part of the problem. The teachers didn't have enough time to always sit down and grapple with that. We have now changed that, so we have three 80-minute sessions a month after school, which will give us the dedicated time we need for teachers to really understand the process well, and be able to analyze their data, understand how to begin setting up their form of assessments, and so forth. So, we hope we'll make a big difference. And then, again, as I said last year, NWA allows us to give a parent report, which is our benchmark testing. We did not give that out last year, because we found it was new to our staff, it was new to us, we weren't ready to do that. But we will be this year providing the results of our benchmark testing to all families in the district. So, they will actually get a report on their individual child in both math and English at the grade levels which we test, which currently is first grade through 10th grade, okay? So, that is our plan, and they will get that benchmark three times a year, so parents will get those results. So, hopefully, that will help to fulfill the concern they had. When I arrived here, I explained to the school committee, we got a lot of work to do. And we have been working through this step by step. And that's difficult, because we have so much to do, we can't do everything overnight. But I'm glad to see in the report that recognizing the work we've already done. And what I was excited is about, the district IOT team had already recognized this as a problem. So, what the report did was, will it confirm what we had already seen needed to be our next step? So, it's exciting to know we already did. So what's exciting to know, we already answered these questions, is we'd already fixed the problems you can find to get in the report.
Again, my thanks for addressing each of these challenges in a prompt fashion. But I have a question. When those NWEA results go out, does the NWEA or do, will we provide a guide to parents in interpreting those results?
Absolutely, absolutely. We're still talking as a district as to how we're going to do that, whether we have a night where parents can come in and orientate and in instruction. It's new for us. So one of the things the curriculum department will be doing, led by Molly at the KDA eight levels, to really look at what's the best way in which to get this information to parents. In my former districts, we always launched with a night to explain NWEA to parents. And then we had a guide that we would give out when we gave the results out. And we usually tried to give it out at a time when a parent's night was coming up. So then if the parent had individual questions, when they came for their parent conference with their child, they could also ask the teachers. We may not be able to do this here because we had our first ones in September. But we may be at least do it for the second iteration of the parent's night. But we will work, we'll approach.
Hey.
Yep.
Chuck. There's a question for me, hold on a second. I've seen some districts utilizing two to three full days for data analysis, decision planning and so forth. Is that something that we may want to look at short-term, long-term? In terms of PD or increasing time for that because in our times that there are you know, there are a full lot of work, as we always say in education. It seems to me that, I never felt I had enough time, because I was an educator as well. I never felt I had enough time to get out of data or come up with adequate plans and so forth. I'm wondering what you've got to say.
Yeah, I mean, different districts handle it different ways. So I think instead of waiting and seeing this back to normal.
As I said to you, I came from a district where we had current planning time every day of 45 minutes for each of our staff members. To me, and I think I said this when I first got here, what I'd love to see, which is a whole remodel and part of what I'll be talking to the commissioner about and the school eventually, is I'd really like to see, and I want to make sure people clear this. I am saying, kids, we still come to school five days a week, but teachers would work four and have one full day of PD. I'd love to see that model. That is progressive. I want to say that that is not something we've seen anywhere. But I don't disagree with you, Chuck. This is very complicated work. It takes a long time and teachers need the time embedded to make that happen. Whether I'll ever get to that while I'm here, I don't know. But what I can say is one of my goals has been to keep moving up the amount of time in which teachers have to do this. Last year, they had 45 minutes once a week. Now we have 80 minutes three times a month. So we have increased the overall number. We will continue to do that. There is a price tag that comes with that beyond what we're doing right now. And so if that's a priority in which the school committee wants, then we'll have to think about from a financial perspective, how we do that. The model that I'm proposing could be cost neutral, but would require probably a good year or so working with the union to try to figure out how that might work. But I think we have to have conversations about that as a district and decide what we think our priorities are.
My other concern is too, that 80 minutes is great, but 80 minutes after school is not great. You know, it would be really great if that was a better time and a little more frequent.
Right. And that is based on our union contract that has been negotiated. So that's what we're basing it off of, to really make sure we're facilitating that time and using it well. But it's a difficult thing. I will tell you, outside of the last district I was in, it has not been embedded in most schools. And has not even, at the high school level. I, the only place I ever saw it was when I was in Granton. So I think a lot of school districts are facing this challenge. And one of the things we have to be able to do is kind of think outside the box as to how we get that full support we need for teachers to be able to do that. And I think it's a good question.
Hopefully, the reason goes up in our negotiations. Thank you.
So under the human resources and professional development standard, the team identified both strengths and challenges. So the strength is a substantial one, and that is the district demonstrating that committed to providing professional development, again, going back to those district priorities. So rather than having a really diffuse professional development program that doesn't get anyone very far, to really say, okay, let's align the professional development with district priorities and design it in a way that really supports teachers' professional growth. Also, the team found that professional development in the district is informed by student performance data. So again, there's this tight alignment between data, the district priorities, and PD. That's offered, that's provided. In terms of challenges, there were a couple of things. One related to the educator evaluation system. So as I mentioned, the team reviewed a large number of educator evaluation files and found that while the required components were by and large in place, that there was not always high-quality feedback, which we define in the department as specific, actionable, and timely. And so in particular, the team found, to some degree, a lack of feedback that would really be specific enough and informative enough to help a teacher know, okay, so what should I do next? What does, you know, what's my next step in my improving my practice? Again, not to say that they didn't see that at all. In the final, it was something that they felt was worth, was worth noting in the report. And then also going back to the professional development program, although it is tightly aligned with objectives and it is informed by data, the team felt that it benefits from actually having measurable goals and objectives for the PD program. They think exactly what are we trying to accomplish, but PD provides.
I was always just curious, and you may not know the answer to this. I was running at U S R, differences in terms of teacher feedback. Was it better at the elementary, middle school level versus the high school? Or would you say it's more across the board?
I don't believe that that's specifically called out in the report. We don't actually, unless it's very typically tried in the report. Yeah, yeah.
So proposed changes. The school district will work with principals on observation evaluation writing and will monitor in the following ways. A daily study on reading, observation using our P T format is one of the things that we are planning on doing. We are selecting a focus area that connects back to the social notion of the fire cycle to ensuring that observations align with that. And then one hour every week during principals' meetings, review observation repairs. Using the work to see if feedback is actionable for teachers. District will create a professional development plan. We will have that ready for you on September 12th. It's a matter of us really extrapolating the items out of our district plan and making it a separate document. So we are working on that currently and we'll have that available for you at the next meeting. We are using the state's guidelines for high and quality professional development to develop that document. And so like I said, we have started it already and we will provide that for you. The other thing that is not here yet, which I am hoping will be added, is that one of the things that I did when I arrived here and requirement for new principals has been that they take part in the evaluation and observation class for RBT. So we do have the two assistant principals at ACES taking that course this year. Last year, the new principals took that course. And we're looking for funding to be able to pay for our many administrators to come in to do that as well. RBT is one of the recommended vendors from the state for this. But it's a matter of funding. We already have slated money aside for our PD this year. But the majority of it has gone to mentors for our new people and for our teachers. So we don't have the funding right now to do that. Again, using the word nible and working very closely with Lynn. I think Lynn's lost a little here in the last couple of weeks. Trying to figure out how we can shift things around. And we're waiting for that bottom line to see what we have available for funds. But we also want to make sure that all of our principals have been trained in that. That is not something that was past practical practice of the district. And again, as I said to you when I arrived here, a lot of things that E W D worked on, there's always so much funds and almost only so much time. We're doing things as quickly as we can to get these things up and running. And it has been our, to move forward with each one of these things. But again, we're going to have the funds to go along with it. So we will add that once we can figure out what the funds will come.
Mitch versus Chuck.
Two questions. One is, I like the idea. I want to make sure I understand it correctly. That principals can be sitting down in meetings with one another to look at each other's evaluations and with their rubric, deciding whether or not the suggestions that they make are actionable meaning that they can start working on them tomorrow and they know exactly what to do.
Exactly.
All right.
Exactly.
Thank you. That's very good. The second point is a question, and that is, are new deans at the high school, have they or will they be participating in evaluations? And will they be, if so, will they be?
I mean, the deanship, it is not part of that role. That's why we're bringing some district people to help with that evaluation. Because they do not have the credentials to be an evaluator, we can't put them under that role. However, both people are going to get their administrative license. So my hope would be that we would still put them through the process of the training for a couple of reasons. They can provide non-evaluative feedback.
Yeah, oh, true.
So they will be able to buy that. But it will not be part of the teacher's evaluation. And our hope is eventually to cultivate them up. And so we want to be able to get them ready for that. And that was one of the things that I talked about when I arrived here, was how do we build the capacity from within? Because one of our difficulties is being in a rural district, sometimes it's hard to recruit. And so we're constantly looking at who might we bring up to help build their capacity? That's why we put in place the teacher leaders and so forth, so that we can get people ready for these positions.
It's good to see you've brought in some support for Mr. King. I hate to, thank you, he's doing all the evaluations all on his own.
Right, exactly. And I couldn't ask him to do that. That would be insane.
Thank you.
So I have a couple of questions and a comment. Kind of a comment. Comment is very complimentary to hear what we're hearing from the Department of Education and the plans that the district has and what the superintendent has brought forward over the last couple of years is night and day from what the past has been the school district. It's wonderful to hear all of these positive activities going on and that you have a level of focus on quality instruction. I think it's marvelous to get what it's been in the past. I'm amazed at how quickly that's happened because it doesn't happen quickly generally. So my compliments, you know, to, not just to you guys, but to the entire school district and the administrators of the school district, you know, and that group back and the teachers backs and all of the kids backs as well. RBT, I find fascinating, we kind of have all our teachers involved in that program. I'd like to support it. Hope the school committee will support it someday. I can speak from experience. I've been involved in it. I taught it. There's no better program for, you know, for teaching teachers. It gives a teacher 17 methods to walk into a classroom just simply to gain the kids' attention. You know, there are so many, you know, tools it gives to teachers that I don't think we can avoid. We need to look at it someday. I hope we can do that. You know, it's a shame that just our administrators are being talked about because it really should become a universal thing of like the thin, you know, like terms. And the other question I have, for all of these wonderful improvements, do you have anything to do with the school-level designations?
I don't, no. I don't. But I think certainly lots of books in the department make these reports. Under student support, the team found that the district has launched initiatives to improve student engagement, which have not yet been completely supported in terms of what it looks like to actually implement. And this, I think, falls under that category that I mentioned at the beginning, which is district leaders, school leaders, teachers are fully aware of this. It shows that he comes back to what the superintendent is saying about only so much time. But the team still felt that this was something that is an area of priority for them.
And so a couple of things. First of all, we have put in that during the day, there will be additional 45-minute current planning. We'll continue the 45-minute current planning time from this year. And that will be dedicated to training our teachers in SEL. The draft document that I've given you for our strategic plan, which has revised our actions, you will see under goal two, our very specific things that we will be doing in regards to SEL. All the way from when we will be training our teachers to when our students will get trained. We will be using the five strategies for SEL, which are in your packet there and explained to you. We will also, one of the things that came up with our parents was around bullying. So we have assemblies that will be happening in every school this year. There will be four of them in each school to discuss that matter and work through it. And we have operationalized. If you remember, last year, we were writing the plan. So we were flying the plane, not necessarily with a flight plan. Because we at least wanted to get people understanding what SEL was and so forth. So we began that process. In that, while we were doing that, there was a team that was led by Catherine, our people service director, actually designing the plan. So the plan has been written. It has been presented to the school committee. And now we are, we actualize it into our district strategic plan. So it is there, step by step, what we're going to be doing. So at our next meeting, the reason why I gave it to you in draft form is you have the time to actually read through each one and the steps we'll be doing and each of the objectives. So if people have questions on any of those at the next meeting, you'll be able to ask them. So it will remain in draft form until we go through it at the next meeting. And then the other thing she put in there was very specific goals that we will get to in mediating some of the concerns that the state has put forward in regards to the measurement. So we have that there as well.
The final standard in the report focuses on financial investment. And again, here, the team found some both strengths and challenges. So first of all, the team wanted to recognize that there is a palpable commitment here to improving and maintaining school buildings through planning and investment in existing buildings and in planning new buildings. And that was something, that's something that I think is also an example of effective partnership because it requires a lot of collaboration in order to achieve a mention such as this in our report. In terms of challenges, again, this is one of those things that we're, I imagine we are confirming what folks already know. Like the district is facing a high number of students that are choosing to enroll in other districts. That's an ongoing challenge and consider how to address that. And also, the team noted that the budget documents in the district are not universally clear, comprehensive, and easily accessible by all constituents. And I believe some of the evidence for that actually came from interviews with some folks and felt like they didn't have the understanding.
So the changes we are making. First of all, we truly believe that the way in which we get people back into our district is having improvement in instruction happening within our district. So that is our focus in our plan. I hope next month, we will actually have numbers for you. I presented numbers, I believe, in June that already showed a decrease in the number of kids opting out of the district. So we have seen a decline in that and we hope to continue to see that decline occur. I know we talked, you know, Lynn talked to me and she said, actually, we're getting less money, you know, coming in from school choice. Well, the reason why we're getting less money in from school choice is because we can't put as many kids in the school choice because we don't have the space because students are staying. And so I want to make sure that's clear. So we're starting to see numbers to document that. Hopefully, next month, we will be able to present that to you so that you can see that. And we can provide evidence to the state that we are working on that and we are seeing that go in the right direction. We also, I've asked Lynn to really begin looking at the other ways in which local districts are presenting their budgets to see what are some of the formats in which we can use to do that. I know Lynn has already begun presenting a new, one of the areas of concern was going around grants. And so Lynn has presented a new budget report, I believe, to the finance committee now reviewing that. But the numbers specifics that were given may not have been enough for us to really understand it. But we are looking at other ways in which schools are presenting and see if we can come up with a new format for that.
Just a quick question. Who are the constituents who are not accessing the district's budget documents?
So I'd have to actually check. I don't have a raw hand if it was listed in the report. But I believe there were a few different groups noted, so I can actually check.
Are there any town groups as far as you know?
Yeah, I obviously can't remember. And we also, we have some report as well, so that in a form of search, if a particular person mentioned something, we don't necessarily include that in the report. But that might, but that might contribute to the team's analysis that multiple, all groups are, or have a certain perception, so. that multiple, well, groups are, or have a certain perception, so.
What I would say to you, just some of the work I've done, I know one of the concerns was principals felt like they didn't have a good handle on the budget process. So I know Lynn, this year, we were very specific and clear. Lynn met with everybody, went over their items, and understood them. Because prior to us arriving, people didn't pay attention to their budgets. Because they just thought the superintendent, he would sign off and say, "Okay, I'll figure out the money." And that made it so that a lot of principals did not necessarily understand how the budget process is supposed to work, or how it will work with their budgets. So we've had to go back and train people around that, because what even when we were doing hiring, we were saying, "Wait a minute, you only have this amount of money in your pool. You can't hire somebody at eighty thousand when you only got sixty thousand there." So we've been doing some of that training. So I know that's a group where that was the case, the situation, and understandable, because of the way things had worked in the past. But moving forward, like I said, we will continue to work on that together. And I know Lynn has been working more intimately with the principals around them, understanding those budgets, to ensure that they have the power to do it.
I don't know if you can answer this question. Do you know if the department has any sort of communication or dialogue with the universities in the state that teach our teachers, that educate our teachers? Is there any communication with them? I mean, they come in here, and we're making all the demands and everything. I'm just wondering if there's anything that's going into the universities? It seems like they're coming out with not what they need. And I'm just wondering if there's any dialogue out there to promote it within the colleges and the universities that are teaching our teachers and teachers?
That's a great question, that's a great question. So our current building instructional support office at the department is actually, they do have a focus and effects of staff that are focused on that, specifically on teacher preparation programs. And they do a lot of work, and I believe in recent years, have really been trying to strengthen that work as well, to really look at what is, what requirements are, what every, whatever teacher preparation program is required to include in their program study. And they also do some accountability process with all teacher preparation programs.
It just seems like it's...
With recognition, yeah, I also agree, yeah.
It almost just seems like they're not keeping up with the demands of today. They aren't keeping up. We're demanding, they keep up with the demands. But I don't think their formal education is keeping up with the demands, yeah.
So I think we're at the end of the presentation. Unless somebody else has any other final thoughts, questions, or requests?
Thanks, great.
Thank you all very much. I love being able to actually come out after a report and look at cases and talk about the report. And yeah, it's really appreciated the opportunity, and thanks.
Oh, thank you. Okay, next up, so YMCA before-school program. Matt, you have two minutes.
Two minutes. Oh, that was a lot, sorry. So hi, I'm Matt Sullivan. This is Executive Director of the Athol Air YMCA. I'm here on behalf of Jennifer and our program that we started. So three years ago, we started this partnership with the district, where we started our Y-ACE program, after-school care at Pizzas. Over those three years, we've heard a demand that people, both parents as well as administrators, have pushed this concept that we should do a before-school program too. It's one of the busiest times in the morning for parents to have those opportunities to get them off and safe to school without all the stresses and all that stuff. So this is something that we hope that we can drive as a wholesome environment for those kids to come into, to get them started off the right way for the day. That means, if you look through here, the second page there is basically a sample schedule of what the day might look like for us. So we have arrival, so we have a support literacy, so a nice calm start to the day, and try and do some reading, things along those lines. Then go into the gymnasium for some physical activity, to get all that end-up energy out afterwards. And then some different learning tools that we've acquired over time. Then we've had the Y-ACE program, Twenty-First Century Learning Grant, to be able to utilize those things and continue learning while we're there. So that's, that's the very brief side of things. I don't want to take that too seriously. But I've been in contact with Shane Cleveland over at Pizzas. And we had a nice, long conversation about what it would mean. We'd be looking at possibly utilizing the many times that we had schools. So if there was a cancellation, so we would pull the program to, we'd be looking to start at six-thirty in the morning, which the building is already open at that point in time, we could study this app. And we would just take up the cafeteria and gymnasium.
Nancy.
So can I make a motion that we let them do it? As a working parent of three, I would have loved you to.
Yes. So that's another thing, is that's a very, a lot of families moving out this way. It's a really good opportunity for people to have that other option, so that they're traveling, continuing their passion.
Carla.
Well, Mitch, just a second. I just have a comment. I have visited that after-school program, and I was really impressed. It's a very, very high-quality program, and you all are doing a great job. So I would support this enthusiasm.
Thank you.
I think the idea of providing an instructive, nurturing program for our kids before school is an excellent idea. And as I've told you personally, I remember here when we started the Y-ACE program after school, and I indicated how impressed I was, because I was familiar with many top-notch communities that have instituted programs like that, and how many communities don't have programs like that. And to be able to join in with those communities that extend outreach into the community and provide opportunities for children to get education and parent and childcare before and after school, to me, that's a real feather in Athol's cap, in Y-ACE, in YMCA's cap as well. And we appreciate the partnership that we forged with the YMCA. And I think it's a great program that I strongly endorse.
There was a motion and a second for further discussion.
This is the kid Hobbit. I know, being a parent with kids in the school system, that teachers actually have to stay up at the playground, because parents are dropping their kids off before they're supposed to be there. Thank you so much for pushing for this, because it's safety for our kids, and it's a lot less hassle for our administrators and our teachers in the building. Thank you.
And we're purposely being designed, so we're in the cap of the gym, so we're not interrupting halftime and all that stuff, so.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor. Thank you. Athol High School Cell Phone Use Committee.
All right, I got my team here. Sophie, coming? All right, so I'm just going to do a brief little introduction, and I'm going to turn it over to our students. So this all falls under our climate and culture at Athol High School. It's obviously part of our strategic plan here in the district, to make sure we're constantly looking at our climate and culture data and looking to improve on those, on all the different points of that. So the concern is cellphone usage during the class time at Athol High School. I've got a couple of data points. The first one was the district focus groups that Darcy does each year, coming out of her March twentieth, twenty nineteen report. The students, the teachers were saying, Ms. Fernandez, we have a problem here with cellphones. Cellphone use among students at Athol High School is an issue. She sent it back to the administration. She said, "Put together a committee, and see what the students, and see what the parents, and see what the teachers at Athol High School want to do." That was one, one data point. A couple of other data points, just in conduct referrals at Athol High School after Tier One intervention. So that's after the teachers have given warnings, provided alternate interventions in the classroom, to get the students to put the cellphones away, to get them engaged in the classroom. So that's after all that is done. Two-hundred-and-fifty referrals were written in the twenty-seventeen, eighteen school year. Three-hundred-and-seventy were written last year.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but could you tell us what has been the policy? So we say, "The teacher is warned, etc." What is the...
So the expectation is, when the student comes into the classroom, the cellphone is away during the instruction time. Away could look like on the desk, face down. It could look like in their school bag, it could look like off. So that's the expectation when a student enters the classroom. Coming straight out of the district report, page thirty-three, had these two quotes from their observations under classroom culture. Grade twelve mathematics class, students sat in groups of three and four and engaged in considerable off-topic conversations. One student has headphones on, and the two were focused on cellphones. Next paragraph, in a grade eleven history class, students were inattentive, focused on cellphones and using earbuds. Many students were disengaged. So that kind of led us to putting together this cellphone use committee. Ms. Rickson and myself stepped away. We wanted this to be something that the teachers, students, and parents took the lead on. So I am going to show you the committee right there. You'll see it, it's absent of both Ms. Rickson and myself. It was intentional. We wanted to, this had to be something that the students and the teachers and the parents could live with. So we took ourselves away. This wasn't really an administrative issue. It was something that we felt needed to be solved by our stakeholders. So Ms. LaJoy chaired the committee. Three students, three parents, four parents, and a total, two more teachers and a paraprofessional joined the committee. I'm going to turn it over to the students. This is Araya Lee, Colby Saltesic, Sophie Putnam. I think Colby's going to take the paper here, or you want me to put it through?
So basically, our work was to analyze the data that the district presented us with, and just find options that would be good for going over.
Oh, we talked about three different options. Yeah.
We talked about increasing the discipline consequences. We came up with the positives and negatives of that. Another option was a shoe caddy in the closets of all the classrooms, where the students would put their phones in there, they'd be assigned a number, and then they had it in there for the entire class period. And our last option is the yonder pouches.
Which would be what? They're going to, they're going to...
We'll get to it.
Give us a second, that's what they're going to do.
So would the increased discipline be like that it wasn't really going to help the cellphone use in class? It was just going to need some more students getting right up? Can that really help the problem?
Would that too, it would take out the, at the time, Mr. King's time, because he would have to deal with more referrals? And also, there's some kids that just, like, they don't care that if they get right up, or what happens to them? With the organizer in the closet, when it was shared with the student body, they were very opposed to it. They thought that being separated from their cellphones wasn't a good idea, and that they didn't want to give them up to someone else.
And it also might be taking more class time to put the phones in the closet and lock it up, and you have to do that if they have any in the class. Maybe there's only like one space for all these students to put their phones.
And our last solution was the yonder pouches. They're basically a, like a nylon pouch almost. And there's a lock at the top that, it's almost like the tags that come on your clothes at the store, where they have to be locked before you can leave. And so basically, you lock it before the class. And then at the end of the class, you walk over and push it onto a magnet, and then it undoes the lock, and you're good to go.
It goes for the students like that better, because they're able to keep their phone with them on their desk and it's not that they need it. So like, it helps so much, like separation type, when your phone's...
Ms. LaJoy, we reached out to a half dozen high schools, and there was nothing about good reviews on them. They said that it was increasing focus in class, social interaction between the students, and there was less disciplinary actions, not just with the cellphones, but like fights instead of disciplinary.
And there are also other reviews online to students, like, they said that they felt like they were more engaged in the class, and they got a better learning experience, not stressing about what's on their cellphone with the yonder pouches.
So, so we drafted a letter, and we sent it to all the parents, and we let them know that we were coming for the school committee tonight. Gave them an opportunity to come here, hear our presentation.
All right, how much did it cost?
And we've got, no, we've got a video for it. We've got a three-minute video, since no one knows, besides you.
It was on the news this morning. It was on the news this morning, seriously. Yeah, they locked us the whole day.
Go ahead, yeah.
So the cafeteria, and kids actually...
So you know, some people cannot put down their smartphones. They're addicted to the distractions of texting and documenting everything they can. But a startup called Yonder is focused on creating no-phone zones by locking up your device. John Blackstone shows how the company's partnership with comedian Dave Chappelle is fueling a growing trend.
That's me!
In their attachment to their smartphones, the students at Mercy High in Burlingame, California are typical teenagers. But when they enter Mr. Offield's English class, the phones get locked into little bags, which can't be opened until class is over.
By separating something that's primarily for their social life, I'm hoping that it brings them a little more into the moment.
These bags are made by a startup called Yonder. Its founder, Graham Dugoni, is attempting nothing less than breaking cellphone addiction.
You thought we needed a new etiquette for the digital age?
Yes, just something to help people engage with each other in a real way. I think what it symbolizes is a movement. And the bag is just the tool.
The Yonder pouch locks, much like a security tag in a clothing store. If someone needs to access their phone, they can choose to leave the phone-free zone. Dugoni first introduced the bags at nightclubs in tech-centric San Francisco.
Sometimes you see someone come in, and kind of their shoulders are uptight, and they're grabbed, clutching at their phone like it's a baby. You can read it on their face, they're saying, "Don't take my phone away."
It's a new movement challenging the new normal, viewing the world through the screen of a smartphone.
Ready for some comedy?
The Yonder bags are now mandatory for everyone attending a performance by comedian Dave Chappelle.
We've had a strict no-cellphone rule for years. Obviously, if you look on YouTube, you will see that very few people adhere to it.
Before the bags, Chappelle often found himself telling jokes to people distracted by their devices.
It'd be very hard for you to talk to anybody if he was doing this the whole time you're talking.
Dugoni hopes to see the bags used in arenas that seat as many as twenty thousand.
You know, after the first five minutes of kind of twitchy hands and looking for their phone, people seem to forget about it and slip into that kind of natural mode of interaction. And that's the kind of the golden moment.
Back at Mercy High, Administrator Summer Ditmer admits to having phone separation anxiety.
I walked into a club, they asked for my phone, I said, "No." And then they said, "You need to put your phone in here, or you can't see anything happening in the venue." So they gave me the thing, put the phone in, put it in my purse.
But you were separated from it, you couldn't use it.
It's almost like being separated from your own limb. But in the end, I remembered more than I typically do in a concert.
That experience prompted her to lease the bags for her school. For senior Ally Ick, locking up her phone was a mental adjustment.
Maybe if there's something going on on social media, I could be really tempted to want to check my phone every second. But then with the Yonder pouches, it really just takes away that feeling, and you don't have to worry about it so much.
Junior Daniella Clinton had to bag her phone for three days on a school retreat.
And I could hear it vibrating, but I couldn't grab it and use it.
And you hated it.
Hated it so much.
Did you see any benefit in it when it was all over?
It was like a break from reality, like I completely forgot about everything, even school, and it was nice.
But not everyone is ready to let go of their electronic addictions. This concert goer was caught red-handed.
You're no longer welcome in the venue while Dave's performing here.
I understand why people use their phones, and why people are addicted to this technology. I'm not any different than them. But people actually watch the show, and they're in the moment, and they're vastly more fun to speak to.
An old-fashioned solution to a twenty-first century problem. For CBS This Morning, John Blackstone, Burlingame, California.
It has to be distracting for an artist when you're on stage and you just see a sea of phones. Beyonce once got in somebody's face and goes, "I'm right here." "We can have a moment right here, and I'm just looking at your phone." So I can see why they do that.
But then other people like Bono, I have you put the lights on and see how impressive it is in a big arena.
So Ms. LaJoy's got all the answers to any of the questions you have. She's done all the research. And we're going to open it up, open it up to questions.
The device is making...
The device is making noise. Do the kids expect it to turn off the device in terms of alerts and things? And what happens if, you know, these things are going off over in the Yonder?
So they are required either to turn them all the way off or to mute them. If the phone does go off, you know, in the beginning of this whole transition period, there'll be, you know, some warnings, but then there will be a consequence, a tier-one consequence if that continues to happen. They're also expected to take their earbuds out and possibly put them in the case so that, you know, they could still be listening to music even though it's in the case. So the earbuds kind of coexist with the phones. That's a problem, but that is the expectation. So yes, there will be a consequence if they go off.
And the other thing, Chuck, is realize they're going off, they can still come up, hit that, turn it off, put it back in the bag, and lock it again. So it does allow that ability to happen.
Are these purchased, leased by the student, by the school system?
So they're leased, so they're like secure. They give them to us, and if any of them get destroyed or like dirty or anything, we can send them back and they'll send us a new one.
So, and who would pay the cost of the lease?
One of the things that I sent to the high school because it was such a concern that we would figure out a way to pay for it. And I think that's important because it is a, as you can see, the state report we're seeing is a problem everywhere, it's a problem. So I think we'll be able to work it out to be able to pay $6,000. Seems like a lot for a household, but when you look at a district that has, you know, multimillion dollars' worth of funds, we can figure that out. I really believe we can. We may go to the budget committee and just say, "Can we take it out of school choice for this year?" And then make it part of the school's budget moving forward for the following year. But I think, I really want to say, I know Donna had come to me after names to death. I really want to find a solution to this. And I want to give her a lot of credit. She has, she has given, probably devoted more than she ever wanted to, but she really has rallied people around it. I think it's a great solution. What's not been said is my understanding is Yonder even comes in the first few days and they police the school and just politely let kids know, "This is the process, this is the ball." So it takes the pressure off the teachers for the first few days. And I think it's a good solution. I think it's a solution that ultimately still gives the kid a way to know that the phone's right there, but at the same time takes away the distraction in the classroom.
I just want to add to the, oh, sorry. Well, I might answer your question. Couple of things, the initial year, the first year, yes, is about $6,000. I'm sorry.
It's about $6,000, but as long as we become a low-maintenance school, what that means is kids aren't destroying them on purpose, they're not getting frustrated and tearing them open, losing them, they expect some of that and that's already implemented into the cost. So as long as we become a low-maintenance school, they will come down considerably year two. And as long as we can sustain that low maintenance, again, it comes down even more so after that, more than half. So we just have to make sure that the kids aren't completely abusing needs, but they said that they've had very, very low circumstances where that has happened. So they do come in, it's a three-day period, it's a transition period. I was hoping to have them come in the first day of school, but when we got bumped to August, they can't schedule you until you have paid, you know? So they said that, I said, "Well, if you get it approved tonight, I'll call the superintendent's office the next day and try to get a PO number, and as soon as they have that, they will schedule us." And so he said, based on his numbers, he was thinking October-ish. So what that would entail is they come in for three days. The first day, they do not hand out pouches. When they first started this, they did it at a school-wide assembly and they said it wasn't intimate enough, the kids weren't paying attention, so now...
They were on their phones.
Exactly. No, and that's, they said, they were on their phones. So now they go classroom to classroom throughout the day. They show videos, they show Dave Chappelle, they show some other famous comedians so that the kids can relate. And they tell them why it's so important. They go over what will happen if they don't adhere to the policy. Day two, they hand out the pouches and then they go around and they sit in the classrooms and monitor what's happening. They watch the classrooms and anything that happens, they deal with it. And then day three, they start to wean themselves off. Oh, I'm sorry, day one, too, at the end of the day, they meet with the teachers and they go over what our role is. And then so day three, like I said, they start to be less of a presence as far as they're starting to now kind of let the teachers take over, but if they see a teacher handling it incorrectly according to what we've established as a policy, they will help out. But they are here for three days and they said that at any time, they'll come back and they will be very supportive. So they're very hands-on and like the kids said, every school I've talked to was raving about the impact that these have had. So to me, that $6,000 is worth everybody, to every teacher at the high school. I think we all agree that it's going to be worth it.
Two questions, please. What grades, I know community governors have phones now, so what grades are we implementing? Is this only at the high school or are we starting at the middle school?
I would like, I would like to see it start at the middle school so that it's not such an adjustment, but I don't know if there's the funding for that yet. I think Garcia would have to answer that.
Okay, so $6,000 is just for the high school?
That's just the high school. Yep, to get us off.
And just a quick question. So they put in the little pouch, so they get to open it after every class?
Yes.
So you can check your messages to make sure, you know?
Either we, we let the parents, because the parents are going to have an adjustment with this too, that they can't talk to their kids. So we told in the letter that they can still, their kids will be able to check their messages in between passing periods and during lunch. So it's not like they're not going to be able to be on it at all.
And what happened when my kids were in school? They, we have cellphones.
Yeah, well, it's an addiction now.
She had a question.
I can't see.
She's actually, maybe like students that are in their school and get into the prices. My daughter, she only owns second to the condition now, but she uses her to monitor the shirt levels, going for hours a day, and they cry and drop all day long. It shouldn't have a phone.
Yeah, I'm sure something would be worked downwards.
Right. And I was trying to ask, is the only point of value that has it, but I don't think...
Plan would be put into place for our situation, of course.
Yes, did you have a question? Yes. Two. One is, one of them was partially answered. I'm assuming then that if a parent has an emergency, that he or she would be instructed to call the office.
Yep, it was in the letter. Yeah, Mr. King put that in the letter, also supplied them with the phone number and told them that as long as it was an emergency, they would obviously get that information to the child as soon as possible. But some parents obviously deem certain things as more of an emergency than it really is. But yes, they were told to call the front office just like it was years ago and they will contact the teacher.
Secondly, I'm, personally, I'm impressed by this and I think it's certainly worth trying, whether it's a solution or not, remains to be seen, but certainly worth trying. And I appreciate the effort that you've all made.
I got to give credit to Colby. When he wanted to be on the committee, I told him, I said, "Find me something out there." And he's the one that brought Yonder to the table and showed it to us. And we were all like, "Oh, my God, we love this." So this was all Colby's, he's the one that initiated this, so.
And my concern is still regarding the middle school. I'm assuming that this isn't a problem in the elementary school. I don't know how much of a problem it is in the middle school. And the last thing I want to say is that, again, been in classrooms at the high school and I can see that it really is a problem. So I'm really eager to see the way it changes instruction in the classroom.
Me too.
Because of Yonder.
I want to go back to, the reason why this came up was to focus schools with the teachers. Mentioned at the high school, it's not mentioned at any other school. And so again, we're trying to jump the trouble ship based on what teachers are telling us are concerned or report. So we did not look at this at the middle school or the elementary because it was not mentioned that it was a problem. And even in looking at the state report, we don't see that same problem report there. More I'll be honest, do I see that same problem when I'm walking through the other building? So we did not look at the other schools because we did not see it as an issue with the other buildings like we saw at the high school. So that's why it was not looked at.
And in those other buildings, I'm assuming the expectation is the same, that when you come into the classroom, that your phone gets put away? Correct.
Just a comment on that. I actually sat in the office here at Arnes Building for about 30 minutes this past year and watched Mrs. Gothier about seven times deal with phone issues. I know it's an issue at the middle school, maybe it's not in the classroom as much, but there are plenty of times where kids are getting sent to the office because they took out their cellphone, they wouldn't put it away, there's a fight with this girl, fighting with that girl over something said on the cellphone over in that corner. It's happening at this level and it would be great to pilot the eighth grade with them so they can transition with the high school next year.
I am amenable to whatever the committee wants to do. I made a commitment to the high school based on the feedback from the teachers. And so that's what I'm coming forth with tonight. If somebody at the school committee level wants to propose it or the principal wants to propose it to turn out the building, we can look at it. But I just want you to know that tonight's proposal is about the high school and getting them up and running. And I think they've done a lot of good legwork and deserve that opportunity.
I think two is if the high school pilots it for one year, I mean, if it can make an impact at the high school, then it will make an impact at any school in the district. So due to the cost, if we can make a pretty significant impact, we can present that data to whoever wants to see it. And if we are, you know, responsible citizens with the Yonder pouches this year, the amount that we would save, maybe that difference could go back in to get it for the other schools if they see that they want them. But I obviously, I think the high school is, like Garcia said, is really where we need to spearhead, to make sure it's worth the money.
Chuck.
My compliments to Mr. King and to you and to the committee. We need the kids to figure it out.
Yeah, of course.
And doing that process is the best way to get this done. And I see, thanks, guys.
Debbie.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the pilot program for the Yonder help program with the high school.
Sammy. Any further discussion? Say none. All of them favor. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
All right, up next, Arnes Leadership Club.
I'm Bonnie Benjamin and Casey Dufour is the, yes, student council president and ISS teacher, and she's been with us all year. We have come from the, I'm coming from the Athol Congregational Church. This evening, I brought one of our pastors, Candy Ashenden. And the other person that is involved, Caprice Spatchelder, is away for the week on a well-deserved vacation. So tonight, I'm just explaining the good things that have happened this year. We voted last year that we could go into the middle school and work on those things that teachers don't have a chance to do, to provide an adult, other adults with open, being an open door to those that are learning, the respect, the perseverance, the anti-bullying. What can you do about this? The integrity, those qualities that we expect of, to be growing in children and young adults, those qualities, and that we hope when they graduate, the path will continue, that they will be good members of our society with those qualities. So I want to show you today, and if you have any questions after you've seen it, we have a video for you that was produced with help from AOTV, and that'll explain what we've done at the leadership group this year.
Hi, I'm Jolly Torres and you are?
Caprice Spatchelder.
I would like to know how the leadership club has started.
We began about a year ago and met with Superintendent Fernandez and members of Athol Congregational Church, and we decided we wanted to be active in the middle school and approached the school committee to do a leadership club for the middle school students.
We're both members of the leadership club, which is run by Mrs. Dufour. We have speakers come in and talk about different aspects of leadership, such as responsibility, being a good leader instead of a boss, and keeping calm around difficult situations. What are some of the activities that we've done in the club?
Some activities that we have done in the club is make posters, positivity posters that help us keep smiling. We've done respect posters, kindness posters, preservance posters, and all kinds of respectful posters that we have.
We've also had many different speakers who own local businesses or work with different, like other local businesses, come in and talk to us about starting a business. And we're doing a project right now where we interview local businesses about their business plan and when they started, their employees, to see if we wanted to open a business when we grow up, how we would do so. What was your favorite part about the club?
My favorite part of the club was to learn about how people run their businesses and how they do it and how they show preservance to keep doing what they do and seeing their road and how they've done it.
I also like seeing how they never give up even when they're tough times.
I'm one. So what we do is you got to push a little bit, you got to cut your, you see? I'm doing it. How many you can get, when you have a minute, you're going to stop, and then I have a challenge for you. How many you can get on there?
I'm ready.
Tony wins! How you doing? Keep going. Don't give up.
I saw you, you cheater!
Do it, don't quit. So how can you do it?
No!
Here's your challenge. One hand only. One hand only.
Wait, no, we have to make it into a bracelet.
That's right. One hand only.
Okay, I'm fixing it. I'm doing it, I did it. I accomplished it. I'm done.
I get it.
I'm going to break my eye. I accomplished it. I'm done.
I get it.
Okay, well, we can try again. How many marbles are stuck? Do you see? I'm... How many marbles? Yes! He's going, I'm good. No, keep going. Say, 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 please. No!
Cheater, little cheater.
You go with that, go. That side, oh! This is your, your straw. Are you ready? Next, go. My minute, keep going, keep going.
But I've been an Athol for forty, over forty years. I taught first grade, so I knew a lot about teaching children and young adults. And I knew a lot about the community and the rich, the richness of our community. We have so many talented people, people that have risen and understand what it is to persevere and to keep working at something. Things are not easy. Growing to an adult is not an easy task. You have to keep trying. You have to fail and still pick up your boots and keep going. So those are the things that we wanted to help young adults gain, some experience. What does it mean? For those that are already fine leaders and for those that are just need an open door, someone, another set of adult friends to help them open the door and learn new things and learn how to try to be better people, that the journey is not always easy. But we wanted to help the boys and girls to be better people, to know that it's not easy and to keep trying.
But this community has volunteered and the people that came, Mitch came and who else came that's here today? There were lots of people, there were lots of people that came, and you saw the entire list, and we have that list for you in the written form. We have done many things. We've spoken to their positive side, and we hope that we'll continue to do that, that we can work further on the kindness, the anti-bullying, that everyone can make a difference. Do you have any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of the group. I know that you're working on areas like kindness and respect and perseverance and all kinds of qualities that our middle schoolers as well as all the other ages really need. I think it's unusual for a church to come in and to partner with schools to do this and yet keep the religious part separate, which I understand you've done very well. But the same kinds of important qualities that you teach inside that church in terms of building real character, you're doing that same kind of thing with our students, and that's very much appreciated. I also wanted to point out that I appreciate this Dufour's work at the middle school. I'm glad she's working with you there. But I also wanted to point out that, you know, we have Ms. Bachelor, Caprice Bachelor, yourself, we have Matt Talbot here, you know, these are people in the community that just bend over backwards to help kids and to partner with such outstanding individuals, and I include yourself in that, Bonnie, because I know how much you do in our community in all different capacities. It's just really wonderful that you folks are able to extend yourselves in that way. And I want to extend my appreciation, and I hope this continues into this year and into the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank them as well, what you guys do is wonderful, you know, so needed in the district and the town. And we can't say what, Bonnie, why don't you just spread yourself?
Thank you. I'll thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again. Thank you. Approval of new standard curriculum of ARMS?
Thank you. Well, thank you, Bonnie, makes you happy. It's been a wonderful gift to have you here. But what's really special about the program to me is that we have kids with all abilities and grades, so thank you to your group, we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
So the curriculum that we asked to look at, it's basically about by two things. One, we lost our culture teacher, which led us to sort of reevaluate what we were teaching in that UA block. The other is we lost Tabed Woodshop to the great passion I follow. So in evaluating which we should go with that UA block, I was hoping to get something that's probably based and tied to the science and engineering standards. We posted for that, we found someone who's very impressive licensed in science and math, and then we developed this curriculum, which we're just asking you to take a look at to approve.
And just so you're aware, it's not a matter of approval, it's within the state standards, so there's a lot of the state's data to do. It's just to inform the committee that it will be one of the courses often issued during unified arts, but it's not outside of the realm of the state's standards, so it will not be something we need approved from the committees on the training that we teach at state.
I just have a question about the curriculum. I looked over the curriculum and everything in it was something that I would have trouble imagining myself mastering at any age. Is this within the capacity of middle school students?
Well, I think they will make it to work at this club. I think it's something I certainly can teach myself, but I think the teachers are very impressive, and I think we have the means and the ability to provide materials to support it, in part for the science team as well as the UA team, and we get all the support she needs.
I want to make sure I'm clear, these are the state standards for this curriculum.
I guess.
So looking at it, makes it intimidating to you, but it is the state standards, and one of the things that we analyzed was, what are the areas of concern when we see our kids aren't doing well, and how do we add more time? And so this is why this was created, because some of these processes are very complicated, and is there enough time in the science curriculum alone to get off? And so this allows us that opportunity for students to have some extended time in that area.
Thank you very much. You would take a little of the weight off the science teachers to have a UA block to cover those standards in the past. They were trying to do both science as well as technology and engineering. Thank you.
Functionality contracted services, this is a, sorry, I'm sorry. Want to know how often this is being offered, times a week, how long?
Tom, we're gonna try to find out how often it's going to be offered to students.
No, every student have one quarter, so it's usually likely to be around four or twenty students throughout the course of the year.
So basically, one quarter, one third of them.
And it alternates with how many other unified arts?
It'll be in the loop with wellness, which is health and gym, the music and art.
Functionality contracted services, just so everybody's aware, this was put onto the agenda at a request of the committee person, and it was added to the agenda for clarification because there were, I received complaints, I forwarded them to the superintendent, committee member Nancy, who also received some complaints regarding this contract and the services, et cetera. So she did ask if it could be done here for a general discussion this evening. This is in no way, shape, or form intended to bash a business or to, you know, dissect what occurred, it's to gather facts and input and then how we're moving forward. Nancy, did you have, you've had questions, has your questions been answered?
I have, I have a package that I need, it's given to me tonight, that I have not had a chance to read, because I received it tonight.
Okay. Just as some background, superintendent, if you could kind of just give a synopsis of what they, and that's what you voted earlier, allow input from Crystal and Nancy.
Every year, budget season, we begin to analyze and look at what's going on with our budget. Will we be going to make changes or switches? And one of the things we've noticed was that we had less kids eating OTPT services than in the past. So I asked the special ed department to begin looking into contracts and see if there was a place for us to cut, and they felt that we could make that cut of about $40,000. So they began working with the vendor to have a conversation about that. In the interim, I also received a complaint from a family feeling as though the services were not being provided. The special ed department worked with the contractor to go through, talk about expectations, what could be done, and they determined it would be more cost-effective for us to go in a different direction. That decision was not made until July 26th. It was our understanding that that vendor would be providing summer services to two families who were supposed to have OTPT services at the district level in the summer. That vendor said, well, if you don't have a contract, I'm not providing. We never cut the contract. We asked for a copy of the contract, the vendor has not been able to provide it for us. This contract was negotiated prior to my arrival and the arrival of the special ed director. They have yet to give us the contract so that we know whether summer services were included in that or not. And as soon as we found out that they were not including them, we notified the families that we would provide compensatory services in the spring, which is suddenly scudly in fall, which is something that can't happen, and so they were notified and made aware of it. There was a glitch in even who would be provided summer services, because an IEP was put into place, which was new, which said it had summer services in it. The old IEP did not say that in the service grid, I want to make sure that's clear. Once the family notified us that it was a concern, we went back and reviewed the IEP and what we found was it was in the narrative and the person did not move it to the service grid. So we were not aware that that child needed the services. Once we figured out they needed it, again, a letter was sent to the family notifying them that that was an issue and that we would provide compensatory services. Our district frequently and often looks at our contracts to see if they're cost-effective for us. We were paying over $180,000 for OTPT services, which might have been appropriate at the time with the number of kids in it, but with the number of kids shrinking, we need OTPT for us to continue paying that amount when it didn't make sense. The other thing that we noticed was on our bills, besides the regular contracted agreement, we also had additional funds being timed into the contract, so it was going beyond what we had earmarked. So we made the decision on July 26th to end our relationship with that vendor, and the one concern was addressed with the letter of we would provide compensatory services in that fall.
And Darcy, in our conversation earlier, you did bring up the fact that there were two affected children or families, and that one of them ended up leaving the district.
There was only one affected family. There were not two, because no one notified us prior that they would not be here this summer. So we already knew that we were not going to be providing them services because they had lactation and said they would not be available for summer programming, because we always send a letter saying, are you going to be available for the services? This summer, we had a large number of kids who had it on their IEP grid to have summer services, who parents chose not to have it for. So my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, it was one of our older one student and Catherine and Chris are here, and we're in agreement with that.
He said, one day, one student said one day, because their last day came back out of the country.
Okay, so that last day they showed up. They are, they have chosen to leave the district, so they are no longer one of our, what a question.
Okay. Megan and Crystal? Hold on, Mitch.
I just wanted to ask, from one end, just, um, looking at it from the point of view of a parent, I understand the necessity to have compensatory services, but at the same time, putting myself in the role of that parent, you hope that those services can be provided during the summer so that the child does not be withdrawn from classes during the fall to get those services. Is there anything we can do to minimize that?
We are, we have just signed contracts, my understanding is for OT and PT to be onboard. I want you to know, we have an email from that vendor saying, these are the kids we'll be servicing this summer. I've given that copy to Nancy, and they denied. So it wasn't that we hadn't planned for it, we had a vendor who assumed, and then the vendor told us, no, I'm not doing it. So I want to make sure that's clear, it was not an issue of, we didn't want people to get services, we assumed we had a vendor who pulled out on us.
I didn't think that for a second. What I'm saying is, I'm eager to see our district do as much as possible to provide those compensatory services in a way that's as easy as possible for that child to access the program.
I want to make sure you understand, and this is a different model than what people have seen before. It used to be the kids got pulled out of classrooms for OTPT services. We do as much as we possibly can within the classroom now, so students do not lose class time. So it's a very different model than I think many people have been used to, and that's been a trend for special education over the last ten years, I'd say. And so the child will not lose class time in getting their services. The provider will come into the classroom and work directly with them on their OTPT as part of the regular classroom.
Which ever one, good.
Do you do it first, Scott?
I just wanted to clarify the mistake that apparently made when I came to the original IEP, which stated apparently that, we talked about OT services, is that correct?
OTPT.
OTPT services, so received OTPT services even though it wasn't in the grid, is that correct?
Correct, and the teacher did not notify us of that. So we usually pulled out from East Bay, from the service grid, who knows why.
So that technicality caused that, that it wasn't flagged?
May I clarify, because we didn't actually. In March, I got an email from the vendor saying that they were gonna service the child, and then the services didn't happen, and that's when we reached out to the vendor. So even though we got missed on the grid, we had an email, we thought it was settled. It wasn't red flags at all.
Thank you.
I just have a question. So we pay $180,000 a year for this service, but we don't have a contract in the, we don't have a copy of the contract here?
My understanding, remember, I've only been here two years.
Right, and I was gonna say, you came in two years ago, so even before you got here, there's nothing on file from before?
Right, we have contacted the former special ed person, we even asked Scott to go through the emails from previous to see if there had been an email contract. All we found was an email that stated, I will work on the contract. So we have no digitized version of the contract available to us. And like I said, when we began looking at the services, that was one of our questions, what are we paying for? What is this?
That was my question, $180,000 is a lot of money to be paying, but not have a contract in hand.
Exactly, and again, I want to go back to when I arrived here. Many things have been done very different than the normal protocol, and so what we have been doing since I've arrived is going through those processes, looking at them and asking those questions. And that's what's been difficult, because what's been difficult for me is that, example, I don't have a contract, I've got a vendor telling me this is what they're supposed to be doing, and they got a conversation with this one and that one, and yet I don't have anything in writing. This is part of what I've had to fix, and I want to make sure this is made clear. At no point, and I want to hear this, do we want that child not getting what they need? That has never been our intent, it was never what we wanted to have happen, but, you know, it was just an evolving set of circumstances that led this way. I think when we questioned the vendor, there began to be some frustration on the end of the vendor, and that caused her to make some decisions that we didn't anticipate were going to happen. And when we're in a situation where all of a sudden they say, we're not gonna do this, and we've got summer school ready to start, we then have to re gear ourselves and come up with something else, and we get similar to the parents, saying, this is the situation we're under, similar to right now. I mean, this year, we were very lucky that the positions, some of these positions for administration, we found out a week ago, and yet we've been able to fill them, but there's a good chance we could have started without those positions filled, because sometimes these things happen. But I wanted to be known and heard that our first priority is always making sure children are getting what they need. And I know the parent was here concerned with the budget deal, I was on a teleconference at the meeting to discuss that with that parent, explained to her, I'm sorry that it happened, it's not something, the way we want to do business at all, but unfortunately, there were a set of circumstances that led us down that road, but that is not the way we care.
Megan and Crystal?
Okay. I'm just gonna sit. Okay. All right, I'm just gonna go through what we had to end, because we were there for that meeting. Dana Lynn was with me, not Crystal, because I think I remember, and correct me if I'm wrong with the minutes, that you had said that the IEP was not assigned, and that's why that was not provided, so just let's go back to that. Okay, so CPAC was made aware of concerns pertaining, obviously, to OTPT services not being provided to extended-year students over the summer for their contractual agreements. So from our understanding, the contract
$180,000 is a lot of money to be paying, but not have a contract in hand.
Exactly. And again, I want to go back to when I arrived here. Many things have been done very different than normal protocol. And so what we have been doing since I've arrived is going through those processes, looking at them and asking those questions. And that's what's been difficult. Because what's been difficult for me is that, example, I don't have a contract. I've got a vendor telling me this is what they're supposed to be doing. They've got a conversation with this one and that one, and yet I don't have anything in writing. This is part of what I've had to fix. And I want to make sure this is made clear. At no point, and I want to hear this, do we want that child not getting what they need? That has never been our intent. It was never what we wanted to have happen. But, you know, it was just an evolving set of circumstances that led this way. I think when we questioned the vendor, there began to be some frustration on the end of the vendor. And that caused her to make some decisions that we didn't anticipate were going to happen. And we're in a situation where all of a sudden they say, "We're not going to do this." And we've got summer school ready to start. We then have to re gear ourselves and come up with something else. And we get similar to the parents, saying, "This is the situation we're under." Similar to right now. I mean, this year, we were very lucky that the positions, some of these positions for administration, we found out a week ago. And yet we've been able to fill them. But there's a good chance we could have started without those positions filled. Because sometimes these things happen. But I wanted to be known and heard that our first priority is always making sure children are getting what they need. And I know the parent was here concerned with the budget deal. I was on a teleconference at the meeting to discuss that with that parent, explain to her, "I'm sorry that it happened. It's not something the way we want to do business at all." But unfortunately, there were a set of circumstances that led us down that road. But that is not the way we care.
Okay. Megan and Crystal?
Okay. I'm just going to sit. Okay. All right. Now I'm just going to go through what we had to end because we were there for that meeting. Dana Lynn was with me, not Crystal. Because I think I remember, and correct me if I'm wrong in the minutes, that you had said that the IEP was not assigned. And that's why that was not provided. So there's lots of pride there. Okay. So CPAC was made aware of concerns pertaining, obviously, to OTPT services not being provided to extended-year students over the summer for their contractual agreements. So from our understanding, the contract with the OTPT company Functionality Therapy Services was terminated prior to the start of extended year. And it was not at her prompt. She was trying to understand if they had someone. She was told they already had someone in place, apparently. So when we became aware of failure to abide by educational plans from services, I ended up submitting a formal public records request as a co-chair of the House of CPAC for a copy of any and all contracts between Functionality Therapy Services and the district. The purpose was to clarify as to when services from the company were to cease per the contractual agreement. Superintendent Fernandez emailed myself on 8/2019 and 8/5/2019 confirming she would abide by my request and was working on getting contracts to CPAC. And then on 8/9/2019, CPAC received an email from Superintendent Fernandez stating the district did not back up a copy of the contract in their possession, which obviously we're going to talk about, but I'm just going through this. So with that said, on 8/7, I remembered at the subcommittee meeting that you did inform us that you couldn't find the contract and that the lawyer would be sending us a letter. So we were kind of confused with the discrepancy there.
What I said was I will be consulting with a lawyer to see what the next steps would be. And I did, and I was told by the lawyer, "Send you a letter saying you don't have possession of that contract."
So I'm just going to keep going.
Which I did.
So on August 7th, obviously, we attended the budget subcommunicating. Superintendent stated the contract with Functionality Therapy Services was set to end. And obvious in that it was the company that did not show up to provide services to students. From CPAC's understanding, the contract with this company allegedly ran for fiscal year, each fiscal year from July 1st to 2/30, to the extended-year students. It had an auto-renew stipulation in it. And that in order to, for either party, they had to submit in writing a formal dissolution request that must commence 30 days prior to June 30th of each year. And that summer services were billed separately. So we do find it alarming as CPAC that a contract could not be located by the district when we are paying allegedly $180,000. And also not to show what was the contractual agreement for our children. Like, this is not something little. These are special needs cohort students who need these services to give them an equal plane to be able to succeed in the educational part. So this isn't something that I feel we should be taking lightly. So with that said, CPAC would like to voice our concerns pertaining to the following. That we've been made aware that transitional meetings between the outgoing PTOT service providers and incoming service providers have not been established nor commenced for the purpose of ensuring a smooth transition with a clear and concise understanding of each student's individualized therapeutic history. And two, how it is that the district will provide compensatory services that do not hinder the child. Meaning if you have Timmy, who is, he has baseball at three, you can't tell him, you can't tell mom, "Well, if he doesn't show up to this at three, he's not going to get his services," and that's you denying services. Because social is just as important as academic. Okay. And lastly, we want to know if there was anyone hired. But I think you had answered that already for OTPT, pardon me if I'm wrong. And if not, what is the plan moving forward? Because school does start in seven days. And we want to know how is the district going to ensure compliance pertaining to providing said services in addition to complying with state mandated timeframes for completion for previously submitted special education evaluation requests as well as any incoming new evaluation requests. And I will email this to all of you because we do look forward to receiving a formal response to the questions we posed. Okay.
Thank you. May I respond?
You may.
As I said to you, we just fully, I just literally signed the proofs, I think, yesterday for the OTPT.
Correct. It is for that person.
Yeah. So they were just signed and hired.
Okay.
Number two, we put down, we have an email that we're giving to Nancy, stating that on July 26th, we notified them that we wanted to cut the contract. So it was not before that 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 happened. We haven't actually documented that being the case. Okay. So we did not cut the contract prior to that. We talked to them about we might get to that place. But we had not cut the contract with them until July 26th. We cannot put together a meeting to transition until we get new people onboard. That literally just happened two days ago.
So is that the plan moving forward to do transitional meetings?
At this particular juncture, I cannot force the vendor to come.
No, CPAC could reach out too. Because I know it's very, the children are very important to her, which was really impressive to us that we approached her. I think you had spoken to her too.
Oh, you're talking about Jen?
Yes, Jen. Yes.
What I would say to you is that ultimately, the Special Ed Department will work to make sure those transitions are put into place. That is their role in that. We have situations all the time where unfortunately, someone leaves. And a new person comes in. Sometimes we're able to transition, sometimes we're not. Because once someone leaves the district, we cannot force them to come back.
No, you can't. But if they're willing, that's my question. If they're willing to come in, which a lot of them are, it's that they would. Would you want me to ask Special Ed for that, or would that be your...
It's our responsibility as a district to put forth those requests and forward. So that's what we will do. What I take my lead from the Special Ed Director is the Special Ed Coordinator and People's Service Director, they are the certified people in this area.
Right.
And so I'm not, I can't answer that question for you right now. It's their recommendation as to how we move forward and what would be best for the transition. Just like we have students right now, Special Ed teachers have left. We don't have the conversation from the prior teacher to the new one.
Sometimes it's a little bit different.
I understand that. But remember that we have to be susceptible to the decision-making of the other individual.
I think we have to be sensitive to the children as well.
We absolutely are.
So I can send these to all of you?
If I could finish talking?
Yes.
I appreciate it. I just want to make sure you're aware that it's worth not not sensitive to the children. And I don't appreciate that accusation.
No, I understand.
We work very hard.
Megan, she has a floor.
Okay.
We work very, very hard to ensure our kids are getting what they need. Extremely hard. And I give credit to all of my administrators who are diligent in working. We have schools right now that are opening in September without Special Ed teachers in the positions. We are not one of those districts because people have worked so hard. So I just want to make sure people are aware of that because I feel like we're in a situation where we're being accused of not providing for the children, when in fact, we've documented everything and we're doing everything in our power to make that happen. There is a national, I want to make sure you hear this, a national lack of Special Ed teachers across the nation. And so that's one of the dilemmas we're running into. So we would love to do exactly what people are asking us. However, we are susceptible that once someone leaves, they do not have to return. I don't know what this vendor will say. I don't know if that's the way in which she would like to go. That's just a question. Do you get back to you on it? Okay? But I want to ensure everyone that our priorities this district is always the child first. We at no point are trying in any way, shape, or form not to provide those services. That's why a letter went up to that parent saying very clearly, "We apologize if this has happened. We are going to provide the services. Here's our thought process." And we explained multiple times now that we should not be in a situation where we have to pull that child from any other activity in order to make that happen. Thank you.
Fred. Yeah, just one point about the compensatory services.
Yes.
We can't give CPAC specific information about compensatory services with regard to a specific child that violates FERPA.
Well, yeah.
So what happens as far as compensatory services is that is something that the Special Education Department works out with the specific parent. So I don't know who the child is, but that is something that is supposed to be worked out between the district and the parent as far as, you know, the nature of the compensatory services and women are concerned.
Right. So is there a way, like, I'm glad you said that. We'd like to know more about that. Is there a way that, you know, say in the future, there was something different, which I'm not saying there would be at all, but is there a way for CPAC to be able to come in and not know personal things, like not individualized information that violates FERPA, but just like a generalized, "No, this is our protocol. We make sure we don't hinder the child." Does that make sense?
I'm not sure it does because everything that they should be doing should be for a purpose and not hindering the child.
Okay.
So the issue with this particular circumstance, and actually every compensatory situation, if it's determined that services were not given, typically what happens is either there's a discussion with the parent about the provision of compensatory services for that child. And sometimes it's gotten in the team either.
Yeah.
Where the team will discuss the best way to provide the compensatory service. So Superintendent is apparently saying that some compensatory services may be due a particular time. And that should be a discussion between the district and the parent, how that occurs. But that information can't be given to CPAC or anyone else under FERPA.
I have to excuse myself. So that was so pompous, Dan, and when that happens, it's really loud.
Thank you.
So was there any further questions?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to handbook approval. The committee was provided the advanced copies of the, all the handbooks. So is there any discussion or motions concerning... Oh, sorry. Kyle.
I would start by moving through to put it on the table, but I just have a couple of comments about the handbook. I had some free time yesterday, so I actually read them all carefully. They're fine. They have been improved in numerous ways that I'm very happy to see. And I think I really congratulate the staff members for their work. Oh, one second, one second.
I'll second that motion, so.
Okay. There are typos in some, a couple of small typos which should be easily fixed, but are really kind of embarrassing if they're not fixed. And one weird formatting error that keeps showing up randomly in random paragraphs across all four of those handbooks. These are things, I know that we're under the gun in terms of getting these things printed and out to parents, but these are things that ought to be able to be fixed in half an hour. I just, I did not have a chance to write down the pages of all these things happened. But there's a strange thing with a random set of paragraphs where the paragraph is formatted so that the sentence, every sentence has to run from margin to margin, even if it's too short to do that. So it's set up with large spaces in between words. No. It's kind of embarrassing.
Once they're approved.
Approve both of the chair.
Oh, sure, good.
Once they're approved, so we use Google Docs.
Yeah.
I got transferred over to Word, so there will be some of that when I went to the school committee. So as we go back and forth, Fred's office, Google Docs and Word. So there were some formatting issues. Once they're approved, our administrative assistants and assistants and deans will fix all of that. So there won't be any formatting issues.
I would mention there is a paragraph in the middle school handbook, apparently copied from the elementary school handbook, which refers to something that needs to happen at an at all elementary school, not at the middle school.
We really appreciate. We have admin assistants and former high school English teachers. And we've been working on these all year, trying to fix all those.
Well, no, this is the last minute, you know. It's kind of embarrassing to have means the way.
Absolutely. We want them to be as perfect as they can be.
So can I make a proposal?
Yeah.
If no one here has any concerns about content, what we will do is have an edit service go through and make sure those typos are fixed.
Okay.
And we can move forward. Only because the concern worry is school opens in a couple of days, we need to have the handbooks. Again, I want to mention that from where we started to where we are now, they've been working diligently all year on this. There was a lot to be repaired and fixed. And so we're doing our best to try to catch up on all the things. But oftentimes, what schools do is they put in their budget for an edit service to come in and do that. That has not been provided in our budget to do. But we'll see what we can do to make that happen. But if the people are having with the content, I'd like to see them approved so that we can move forward. Only because my worry is we open in a couple of days and we won't have them available to families. So if people are okay with that, that's another thing.
And you can make that a motion simply saying that approve the handbook with immediate practical or format changes.
I will accept that.
Certainly will accept that.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Seeing all those in favor? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Moving along to superintendent evaluation. We did discuss at the last meeting that the process would not deviate from the last time we did this. So I have with me the cumulative review in document that gives the overall grades, et cetera. If you want, I can just quickly run through that with regards to just stating the sections and the... Because I think that's what we did last time. Any objections to what we had stated? This is the end of cycles, the summative evaluation for superintendent.
Can I?
You can.
My only concern is it hasn't been approved yet. So I don't know if there should be discussion before giving out those.
Okay.
Or whether we want to alter anything. What could be made public may not be accurate.
Yeah, everybody was provided with one, be it email. I didn't see the email. But magic of television.
You can make the motion to approve the second committee discussion.
I make the motion to approve that.
Is there a second? I'm sorry, I couldn't make a motion.
I make the motion to approve the evaluation so that we can discuss it.
That's a summary of that.
Summary of the question.
And John? After you go slap. That's fine. Oh, she has an exclamation. The, okay, so just like the last time we did this. Step one, just, again, I'll go through this and announce the overall findings. This is assess progress towards goals. Professional practice goal met. Student learning goals met. District improvement goals met. This is step two, the assess performance on standards. And then it tells you to go page four to seven first and then come back and do this, but I'll just keep going. Standard one, instructional leadership. Standard two, oh, sorry, proficient. Standard two, management and operations, proficient. Standard three, family and community engagement, needs improvement, and professional culture, proficient. Step three, rate the overall performance based on steps one and two, that's proficient. Step four, rate impact on student learning, moderate. Superintendent's performance goals, and I'll just kind of paraphrase them. This is, you'll complete the strategic plan for social emotional learning. Met. The district's overall proficiency gap between the state and ELA will increase by 3.3 points from the current average rate of 13.2. That was met. District will increase teachers' implementation of literacy instruction by 20% from the start of school. That, I have to, the titles aren't on that page. Exceeded. District overall proficiency gap between the state and math will decrease by five points from its current rate of 15. Met. Let's see. Performance rating for standard one. And I'll just give you the target and then, I don't want to go through all this, but... This is item 1A, that's proficient, which is curriculum. 1B, instruction, met. One B, instruction, met, ah, proficient, sorry. I-C is, one C, sorry. Assessment, met. One D, evaluation, met, proficient, sorry. I, I'm not looking at the title, so I'm kind of, I'm kind of guessing. One E, data formed decision making, proficient. Scheduling and management systems, proficient. Two D, law ethics policies, proficient. Fiscal systems, budget, proficient. The overall there is proficient. Superintendent's performance rating, number three, standard three, family and community, three A, proficient. Three B, proficient, which is sharing responsibility, collaboration. Three C, communication engages in regular two-way cultural, proficient, communication is proficient. Family concerns, addresses family slash community concerns, equitable, effective, and efficient. That was needs improvement. The overall rating for standard number three is proficient.
That is not accurate.
Huh?
That is not accurate. You said in the beginning, on the standard three, that I was needs improvement.
That, well, the overall rating for standard number three is proficient.
Right, but in the front you said I was needs improvement. Look at the first set of standards, you said I was needs improvement.
Then that is an error. Because I believe we just took them from this. I need to get corrected. This is the. I'm just trying to, oh, wait a minute, hold on. Yeah, this one, this is under three, standard three, which on the cover page said needs improvement, but on the overall rating for standard three is proficient. So that actually should be proficient up front. Here. Or, or this needs to be needs improvement. Okay? All right. Cheryl, redo that. Because I know if you look at the cumulative document with regards to the numbers, that would indicate needs improvement under that category. Three.
May I ask you where that, where you're reading those numbers from?
This is the same process as last year?
Yeah, only we look at the standards.
Yep.
In that area.
Yep.
How many of those individual standards that are under power engagement did I get needs improvement?
I can tell you if you want me to.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure I'm clear on how long did this score?
I thought I could. Under that standard, three A was engagement. There was five proficient, one exemplary, four needs improvement. Sharing, three B was, again, the title. There were five proficient, two needs improvement, one unsatisfactory, and two exemplary. Three C, communication. There were five proficient, two needs improvement, one unsatisfactory, two exemplary. Under the three D, which is the family, community concerns, et cetera, there were five needs improvement, two unsatisfactory, two proficient, one exemplary. The overall rating for standard three was five needs improvement, three proficient, two exemplary. That's the number.
I don't understand five needs improvement. I'm trying to understand how you calculate it because when you look at my numbers, on the last indicator, I got needs improvement, but on all the others, the score swayed to a proficient side. So I don't know how you calculated to make the determination that that area was needs improvement. I'm just trying to understand the figures and the way that you wrote it so that I can understand how that determination was made.
The. Cheryl, perhaps explain how she did the process because I didn't physically do this. She did the work on it like she did last year.
Last year, the way I'm retired, it stood as if the majority of the, of the committee submitted saying that I was proficient in those areas, I was proficient. And so I'm just trying to understand how the calculations were made in that particular category to give needs improvement because when I read through it, in every standard except one, I got proficient. So I'm, I'm trying to understand the calculation. That's all.
So when I read through all individual ones, I just took the straight numbers from all of the ones. And they were a gambit, some of them, so I did my best to try to figure out what category I would need in the middle.
So, so my question is you were not given direct direction by the school committee as to how to count like that?
So I was just trying to take an average of all of that.
But were you given direct direction by the school committee as to how to count?
I just tried to do the same thing that I did last year.
So I'm just asking the question, what is the criteria under which the school committee is making the determination if I am proficient or needs improvement for the categories? That's, I'm, I'm just asking the question because I want to know how I'm scored and, and, and the determination is made.
This is the same process as last year. So whatever the process was that was put into place, maybe you might add, this is the.
Maybe I'm, I'm confused, but my understanding is the school committee makes that determination which I was told to make. And my question is, when I asked the admin assistant, she's saying, I did the same there as last year. My question is, didn't you make a determination as that that's the way it was going to be made? I, I'm just trying to understand.
Well, the difference between this year and last year is that last year, Debbie did all the calculations.
Okay, so you was the admin assistant, did not.
We actually kind of did it together that day. Well, we sat down and I tucked them into the computer, but you had already had all the numbers typed in. I had, yeah, I had gotten added up all the numbers. So all I did was took them in and Debbie had them all added up. So I was just the typer. This year, I tried to do all those calculations myself just by taking an average.
If you, if the, if the committee would like, we can certainly review this.
The chair?
Yes.
If that's what I was going to do is I would propose that we take another look at a particular item and ensure that the, the rates that, that the average that it provides is, reflects accurately what the committee felt and what individual scores indicated. I certainly know that every person on the committee wants to be fair to the superintendent.
That's fine with me if you want to withdraw the motion to approve. And we'll just take a look at it and bring it back next month. Because I mean, I want it to be fair. If there's an error, I'd rather have it.
I can withdraw the motion.
Okay. We'll move along and we'll take care of that matter under advisement and, you know, you can dissect exactly what happened. And the superintendent can participate. Thank you. Fred.
So as I hear this issue, the issue is how the score.
Yep.
So under the most recent case decision, you have superintendent evaluations. The ideal situation is scoring is done not by a school committee, not by a superintendent, but by a third person, ideally someone who works in a central office, which was the case here. So I think the only question is whether the methodology of the scoring had an error. So I think that's the issue. So the question is, how do we determine whether or not there was the, an error in the methodology for scoring? Oh, sorry, Jen. Do the point system be used for each category? Each person, a disappoint system, an average of the points? That's the way I would have thought it was done. However, I don't know how it was done last year. I, I would have thought that the methodology would be add all the scores together and divide by the, you know, number of individuals, but it didn't have the score. Is that what you did?
Yeah, is that what you did?
That's what I was going to say.
But asking if that book is done this year?
That's not what I was going to say.
So how did you do it differently than that position?
So I made a determination not by calculation.
Okay. So I, I, because the process was supposed to be the same as last year because there was no book to change it, I think that Deb could tell you what the methodology is. But once you know the methodology, you should do it yourself. As opposed to other people being involved. So if the methodology was you add them all together and then you divide it by the number of individuals, like you should score, you take a look at that score and then look at the criteria within it, then that would give you a rating. But Deb can tell you the scoring methodology that you used last time. But once you understand it, then that's what we should do. We should do the same scoring methodology.
So you can assist, you can give that a vote?
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, essentially the confusion here arises from not having a stated policy. And I think if possible, before we enter in the meeting, we should just vote on a stated policy for future reference.
I'm seeing Rupert.
Rupert. Yeah, sorry.
Well, it's kind of hard to do at the table.
I mean, we call Rupert.
The superintendent evaluation is the process that being changed. The state's going to go through and hold it properly.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think the real issue right here is just scoring and making sure that the methodology of scoring is accurate. Next year, you're going to be in a different process and you're going to review what the process is for the superintendent evaluation, using state standards that their current process is different. But the real issue tonight is just the methodology for scoring so that you get a, a accurate score in each category.
So each category is going to be a reading figure?
I think we're going to have a new scoring for each category. So I don't think it eyeballed us done using, you know, math. It adds, it divides, gives you a number, and that's the definition of score.
Okay. We'll take, we'll, Deb will discuss with Cheryl the way that it was actually calculated last year. We'll present the documents again, I'll send them to you.
Go ahead, one more question.
You could.
So when I was saying that generically, Deb, is that the way you actually did it? As far as the calculation last time? So the way you did the calculation last time, tell us what the best.
I'm going to have to look back and see exactly what I did. Because I don't want to speak about, without looking, the way I know, so to say, what I did.
That, you know, I can.
Pretty sure I know what I did, but.
Okay.
I think each one is assigned a number.
Right, based upon.
As I remember, what, and the line for columns, five down to like one. And that's how, I'm pretty sure that's, but I don't, don't probably have that yet because I want to look.
Yeah. I don't know how else you could do it, but I would think you'd have to do that way.
Does it, is that, just to, just to clarify, when we did this the first time by the three-member subcommittee, is that the way you did it?
I, you know, my recollection was that we, that it was a matter, where there was agreement, there was not a problem. Where there was disagreement, we went to some extent mathematically. It was, it was three people, as I recall. So if there were two, if there were, what's the top score? If there were two exemplaries and one.
I don't think there was as many choices the first time we did it.
Right, but essentially if, if we had three people and two said one and one said the other, we'd go with the, you know, the two because.
Because there wasn't a middle ground in the rank for there's five categories. Then, you know, a person puts their destination one in five categories, then you would just add it up all the rankings in five by five to give you the average.
That's the sensible way to do it.
I'm just, I'm just trying to point out that, a clarification that we've done this three different times. So we need to, we need to do it. We need to do it so it's presented properly.
Yeah.
First time was totally different, last year, this year, always on the same page.
And, and so as part of your new process, you should specifically discuss that methodology company. I think it has to be an addition in a division by five.
So again, Deb will work with Cheryl and do that right and we'll resubmit it and then reapprove. Submit it to the superintendent and then move it forward. All right. Are you guys all set? Financial statements and approval of accounts?
Okay, expenditure report. Expenditure report. As you know, the business office, central office is got one, one leg in fiscal nineteen and one leg in fiscal twenty. So we're, we're trying to finish off fiscal nineteen and start fiscal twenty. What really impacts the budget obviously is personnel. Personnel is eighty percent of our budget. So the more blue sheets and everything we get, the more changes we get, the more it impacts us. So this is just a real early expenditure report. And I've just notated a couple of different things on here just that I could bring your attention to. But I just want to let you know that right now, they're looking at payroll, encumbrances and stuff, they are going to change. I think we've got four new blue sheets in the bag, so things are going to change. And don't just settle, this will be kind of a moving part. So expenditure report, I think on the first page, I just noted a couple of things that in the central office, in the business office, we do charge some of our salaries to what's called indirect costs and grants. Title one has indirect costs, indirect costs help cover costs, it's kind of like overhead. So, you know, the bill payer, the payroll person, they process the grant payroll as well as the regular general fund payroll. Does everybody have a expenditure report? Yes?
I'm a little confused, like one picture.
So you've got twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Yes, we are in fiscal twenty. Fiscal twenty is our new year. So yes, this is, this is the brand new, our first fiscal twenty expenditure report. The next thing I noted was, I just noted, noted to myself basically that our, our biggest district advertising bill is our school spring. That's when we put all of our advertising on there. So I know that it's going to be a big bill coming in for school spring. Page two, again, twenty thousand dollars of the principal salary at Oilston is charged to title one because she is the coordinator for title one. Just want to let you know, so what you're seeing here is part of her salary. Page three, we are seeing some charges to subaccounts already. We had changes in our administrative offices. We had the, the middle school administrative assistant resign and moved on to bigger and better things. So we had a sub in there for a while. We had the RCS, Marie Lejoy, as you know, had been there for many, many years, she resigned. So we had some movement there. So you're going to see some subaccounts being charged because of those. Page four. Oh, page four, so here's one of the, the big salary or wage changes. If you see in the right-hand corner, see all those negatives? If you see in the right-hand corner, see all those negatives? That's because we haven't gotten the parrot piece yet. We've got the teacher contracts in, I think they're all done today. And the next step is working on the parrots. You'll notice negatives over on the side there, but we have not put in the three para retirements that have happened. We have not put in the two paras that are actually going to be going to grants. So those accounts, again, just settling those accounts will look okay once we get all the two sheets in. Page five. Not a lot down there, getting down the bottom, just kind of circling. There's a thirty negative and a thirty positive, so basically that's just a budget issue between those two lines. And once that's straightened out, those, that will straighten out. On page six, again, we're encumbering new contracts. And we get contracts, we're making phone calls, we get contracts, we're putting contracts and grants. So you'll see an identification piece of it, our contracts, we need to go in there. And these are all the things we have to prepare and get into the new budget before it actually makes sense. Page seven, not much going on there. On page eight, we had extraordinary maintenance this year. Extraordinary maintenance year, this year was voted in fifty thousand. And if you recall, a part of that extraordinary maintenance you talked about was replacing the phone system at the high school. Technically, the phone, replacement of the phone system is an acquisition of equipment, not maintenance, extraordinary maintenance. So I do have tonight a line item transfer. It's basically just taking the budget out of extraordinary maintenance and putting it into acquisitions where the DESE wants to see it. And I'll explain that to you when we go over the budget line. It won't change the budget, bottom line, it'll just change the line number to stay. Page nine, just bringing to your attention, as people retire, we do pay out more than their salary. We pay out what they've got, if they have approved vacation time, especially administrators. If they do have approved vacation time, we do need to pay that out as well. According to this, we paid out over twenty-three thousand dollars now that's been approved vacation time.
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
Just so people are aware, that was in the contracts. We are now altering the contracts of that, because it's suddenly, the way the contracts were written prior to becoming, basically it said, if on June one, you're still in the position, you get all of your vacation time. So if on June, I'm excuse me, on July, so on July two, if I decide to resign, even though I haven't worked that whole year, we have to pay them all of that time. So that's one of the things that we have now altered and worked and read on recompliment contracts. So that we don't have those obligations, it will allow them to fully create it based on the amount of time they're there in the year.
Yes. So going forward, you'll see the twenty-nine thousand is posted there for the Valley Communications phone system. Again, I will address that with a line item transfer, put it in the right DESE category for that phone system. And then on page ten, this wraps it up. I just want to bring your attention to the school choice in the cherry sheet, it's always estimated. The first school choice number we receive is usually estimated on June's actuals. I look back at June because the actuals being a little higher than what I expected. I look back at June and discovered that thirty students are graduating out of school choice. So they will be falling off the school choice coffer off the list. And we should see a smaller school choice going out of tuition once those thirty seniors that graduated in June filter off that school choice. The next time we get another accurate accounting of school choice is sometime in December. So I hope to see a good drop then. Other than that, our budget this year is twenty-four million, seven hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred fifty. That's our grand total at the bottom. And basically, we are working to encumber as much as we possibly can with contracts as are coming in. And we hope to get as much done. So that when we meet in September, this budget report will make a lot more sense. All the staff will be in and we get more of an accurate bottom line figure. And that's expenses. Any particular questions on expenses before we go to revenue?
Yes. Thank you for that excellent review. I just want to make sure the record was correct in regard to Maria Lejoy, that was to be retired rather than designed.
Oh, did I say designed? I'm sorry. No, she retired after many, thirty-something years. Yes, exactly, I'm sorry. I meant retired. Anything else? Then we'll go to revenues. Same kind of thing, you know, brand new, starting out, again, you'll see, you'll notice the revenues, which should. Balance, we, our expenses are twenty-four million, seven hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. We just received our first chapter seventy payment, which there's a kind of a to-do around on the listserv for everybody because the payment, for some reason, was needed on August first for our July payment. It should have been made a week prior to that. So people are asking why the state is a week late in sending out their payments. So we'll see what happens with this next payment. It was a little curious. We normally get July before July ends, and we didn't get it until like the first week in August.
Did they have a state budget? I don't think they had a state budget.
That may be the reason.
I think the state budget was signed about July twenty-fourth, wasn't it?
So maybe that's why, that could be why. So anyways, it's coming in and again, very early, we're hoping revenues will come in as next budget.
Mitch, then, yeah, go ahead.
Did we see any increase in funds after the budget was finally signed? Did we come up?
We did, not a huge amount. I'm going to say off the top of my head, it was about between forty and fifty thousand, we did see an increase. We saw an increase in transportation, we're going to get a little bit more there. We saw a little bit of an increase in circuit breaker. But what's throwing us off right now is the school choice because of the estimate. But if you take the school choice out of the picture, we are seeing about forty-two thousand dollars worth of revenues that are to our good.
Can I say this, Owen?
Yes.
Please know on the grant side, however.
Yes, on the grant side.
So I want to make sure, so we might have picked up forty thousand here, but I only got the grant funds.
So yes.
We lost it there.
You're absolutely right.
I think we needed the numbers, we ended up eight, eight thousand to plus.
Well, it's better to be with the funds.
True, true. So between the grants and the general fund, three thousand dollars.
I want to do, take this opportunity before Chuck does hand up. To once again, thank you for the handling of the budget, no transparent it is. Thank Darcy as well, the team that works on this. And also the, who's on our, sorry, I should know this, but the finance and budget subcommittee, the school committee, who's on that committee? Nancy?
Chuck, Bill and Wade.
Thank all of you, because again, I just can't remember the budget going so smoothly. Both within.
He's a young guy, he shows up sometimes.
I can't remember the budget. Nancy?
I'm sorry.
I can't remember the budget going so smoothly, both within this committee and also with our relationship with the board selectman, the town manager, the committee, committees, whatever that institution is called. Everything runs really smoothly, with very few bumps, if any, in the road. And that's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
I'm just going to.
Chuck, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I take it for granted.
I was just going to comment, it's after a good time, so.
Okay, yeah, I know. I had visions of being done at seven-thirty. Blew that out of the wall.
That is what we need to call it.
So moving along, both budget line transfers, I have a small one that I presented tonight. There was a request from Royalston to move two thousand dollars from her general budget account to her Royalston duty wage account. Because it's a two thousand line to a three thousand line, I have to bring it to your attention, it is pretty small. But it's something that she wants to get a couple more recess people in. So she thought she could take two thousand out of her general supplies budget and put it into duty salary. That's the first one. And then the one I've been talking about as we went through the budget is I want to take it out of extraordinary maintenance, the upgrade of the new system. Because extraordinary maintenance in DEO's eyes is upgrading systems we're already having.
So move.
So.
Second.
I didn't even do this.
Motion made and seconded to approve the FY twenty budget line transfer as submitted. Is there any discussion? Ken moved it and Nancy, did you second it?
Is this for both of them?
I think Mitch seconded.
Okay, Mitch. Any further discussion? Saying none, all is in favor.
Ole, can I just say one thing?
Of course. Go ahead.
The principal's always asking to move money.
I know. I noticed that. It's been that long.
And the only other thing on here is the grant report. And that was something that was brought up in the state review, if you noticed. But because we're right in the middle now of writing the grants and getting them approved for twenty twenty, I don't really have a grant report for you. So once we get them all online, you'll see a new grant report as to all my reports on a monthly basis. And that's it.
Strategic plan, okay?
Just very simple, I want everybody to wrap. To read for the next meeting, after the next meeting, I'll answer any question, people have.
Reports of the committee. Reports of the chair. I have nothing. Budget? David?
We're good.
Facilities. Ken?
I'll make it brief.
You're good.
The windows are nearly complete. We are under the understanding that all the windows will be in place for the opening of the school, possible exception of a few in the gym area that will be framed and safe. The project won't be complete because there's window shades and window sills that need to be placed. But we will have no problem with opening. The water, what's it called, the water?
Filtration.
Filtration system is installed in Royalston School. And the tests have been getting better each day with the approach. That's the high ones.
Thank you for those. Negotiations.
Our next meeting, we'll start negotiating again on September twelve.
Agreements, examples.
Hello, meeting again, is it Ken?
Public relations.
We will be again in September.
Policies, second meeting.
We have, I'm not comfortable, we have four policies to be approved for second meeting. And we still have clarity, we'll start in the second meeting. I made a motion to accept the votes for the second meeting.
Second. Discussion. Saying none, all is in favor.
And our fourth or third meeting. I made a motion to approve the four for the third. I'm still talking.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor. Brings us to committee member referrals. Okay, Nancy.
I'll step in.
I'll step.
I'll step.
Is there a quick question, where are the use policy?
Move on.
Nothing for me. Ken? Nope. Cal, Bill, Mitch?
Any aggressive time, nothing?
I made a motion to adjourn.
Just a reminder, it's September tenth for the executive session here. Tuesday night at six-thirty, it'll be the only thing on the agenda. And again, I'd just like to state that, you know, we'll review the evaluation and make sure that the appropriate information interests the committee as well. Nancy?
I already did.
Okay. A motion to adjourn in the second. Any discussion, seeing none, all is in favor.